Starting the meeting, and so welcome to the Manhattan City Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda tonight is we have a couple of proclamations. First proclamation is World Polio Day. I believe we have three, have three copies because there's three individuals that are going to get a copy. If you want to come forward, Robin, and Usha, and Rich Sell. There we go. Okay, and I find this proclamation interesting. I'm gonna sort of make a comment about it. There's two great vaccine success stories in, in American history. One of them's smallpox and the other one's polio. And while there were some horror stories in both, generally we can say those were tremendously successful, and that's something I think people should study today because it's very relevant with, with the current pandemic. So on that note, if you would read the proclamation, I'd appreciate it.
Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. The Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and spearheaded, spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, US Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. Polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. To date, Rotary has contributed more than $2.2 billion in countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. There are over 1.2 million Rotary members in 36,000 clubs throughout the world that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Now therefore, when Butler, Mayor of the city of Manhattan, Kansas, thus hereby proclaim October 24th, 2021 as World Polio Day in Manhattan, and encourage all citizens to join the mayor and the Rotary International in the fight for polio-free world.
Okay, thank you. I want to present each of your copy of this proclamation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I want to also acknowledge that we have three other Rotarians in, in front of us tonight. Ron Fair, Lynda Morris, and Mark Hadzal are also all members of local Rotary Clubs. Thank you very much for proclaiming October 26th as World Polio Day here in Manhattan. I would just add to the comments here that it is the goal of the Global Polio Eradication Initiative to eliminate or to eradicate polio by 2026. And in the last three years, there have been wild polio cases in only two countries of the world, Afghanistan and Pakistan. So we feel that that goal of eradicating polio by 2026 is doable, particularly given the resolve of the Rotary Foundation and the Global Polio Eradication Initiative. So thank you again for the proclamation. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, the next proclamation we have is on the Buddy Poppies. So who've we got here tonight for the Poppies? Always a big thing. If you haven't gone to the World War I Museum in Kansas City, you should go there because the entrance has got all the Poppies underneath the glass and it really, it's really moving. Okay, so let's begin. You want to, we're going to pass those out first, or?
After the proclamation.
After the proclamation, okay.
There's, there's a process here.
Okay. But you can always change the process.
Nah, tradition's great.
Go ahead and read the proclamation.
Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. The basic purpose of the annual cell of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, when Butler, Mayor of the city of Manhattan, Kansas, thus hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through donations toward the Buddy, Buddy Poppy Drive on October 30th, 2021, the day set aside for the district, distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead and to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of their freedoms, which we continue to enjoy today as American citizens.
Okay, excellent. I'll present the proclamation to you. And then it's going to be my pleasure to give you the first dollar that you're going to collect here tonight on those Poppies.
Thank you.
I'll get one. As a veteran myself, I really appreciate the work that's been done by the VFW.
I get 30 seconds?
Yes, you do. Or longer if you like.
Okay, so just a little, for those of you that aren't familiar with what the Buddy Poppies do, other than what the proclamation said, the money that we're going to raise on October 30th for the Homecoming Game, we're going to be at Hy-Vee, Walmart, and Dylan's East. But the money that everybody would like to donate, you don't have to, but you'll get a poppy anyway, goes into what's called our Veterans Relief Fund. And what the relief fund is for is for local veterans to help them in times of need. And we've done a lot. We buy refrigerators and beds and help pay electric bills and, and a lot of it last year. So this year is going to be really important to us because we really helped a lot of veterans out last year. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll leave that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you coming. And on the 30th.
On the 30th, yes, it's the 30th.
Or buy another one.
Well, I hope so.
Yeah, okay.
But you don't have to.
I understand.
And it's interesting, if you're, you're not totally familiar with World War I history, you know, the Poppies represent roughly, you know, because it came from Flanders, because there were a lot of Poppies there, Flanders Fields, 21 million killed on the battlefield. Which is an astronomical number when you look at, you know, things in today's, today's wars. And of course, you know, America didn't lose that many. The British bore a lot of the cost of that, and, and also the French, of course. Okay, and what's fitting is our, our next proclamation sort of dovetails with the Poppies entirely, which is Veterans Day. And of course, Veterans Day, you know, is based on Armistice Day, which is a conclusion of World War I, 11th day, 11th month, 11th hour. And so Brenda, if you would read the Veterans Day proclamation, and we'll have a few words from you.
Whereas Veterans Day has its origins in the November 11th, 1918 armistice, which brought World War I to a conclusion. And the Allied victory of World War I affirmed the strength of great nations acting together for high purposes. Veterans Day continues to be celebrated and commemorated with solemn observances in honor of all Americans who have served the country in times of war and conflict, and has become a significant part of our American heritage as we recognize the millions of our citizens whose military service has had a profound effect on history. The courage, honor, sacrifice, and dedication which veteran of the United States Armed Forces have displayed in the cause of justice, freedom, and democracy are most worthy of recognition. Now therefore, when Butler, Mayor of the city of Manhattan, Kansas, thus hereby call upon all citizens to commend America's veterans and observe Thursday, November 11th, 2021 as Veterans Day, and ask that the day be observed with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve our principles of justice, freedom, and democracy.
Okay, thank you. And I think we're going to have a great Veterans Day parade this year, which I'm sure you'll talk about. We'll, I think Old Engine One will be available again to, to ride. And we've got all the service flags there, and even added a Space Force flag for this year.
I heard it's going to be 75 degrees and sunny.
It better be. We haven't had good luck on that. I posted the other day online a picture of the parade two years ago where the, the generals' color guard, the horses rode in the trailer because it was snowing. So, yeah, I hope you're right.
But some of us were on the ground, right?
That's correct. We were on the ground.
So we don't get treated as well as horses sometimes. Hey, first off, thanks very much on behalf of all the veterans. I, it's an incredible honor to be the one receiving this for the veterans and for the Flint Hills Veterans Coalition. As Mayor Butler already discussed, we're having a parade this year, and we're also having our ceremony of honor. And I sincerely thank all of you commissioners for the support that you've given to the veterans community here in Manhattan, as well as, you know, the Riley County Commissioners, the same. The level of support that we receive as veterans is, is immense. And I sincerely want to thank you on behalf of my organization, the Veterans Coalition, for all that you do for us. And take this as your formal invitation to be on the reviewing stand to observe the parade, as well as at the ceremony of honor thereafter. This year's celebration is for veterans of Desert Storm, which some of us were in.
Yep, I was there.
Yeah, there we were. That old guy over there that sold flowers just a minute ago, he was there too. But for those veterans of Desert Storm, because it is 30 years since that, that happened, but also for those Vietnam veterans that welcomed us as we returned and made sure that our welcome was done properly, and that we did not, as Desert Storm veterans, suffer the same trials and tribulations that those Vietnam veterans that trailblazed for us. But once again, personal invitation, your written ones will be in the mail. No, actually, your written ones are in route, but you'll receive that. So, and afterwards, Vet Fest. Yeah, the first time for, see, that's why, you shouldn't stand up here. You shouldn't let me talk. But this year, we're also having a festival afterwards, after the parade. You know, you come for the parade, you stay for the party. And the party's going to be in, in City Park, and we're going to have an M1 tank there and probably one of the fighting, fighting vehicles on the planet, the M2 Bradley Fighting Vehicle is going to be there as well. And various other displays, specifically the BA, a food truck, and some other things.
Fire department.
Oh, fire department, police, of course, the police department's going to be there helpful, not arresting me, but actually having a display. But. Bounce, yep, bounce. You should have come up here, but the, you don't even see your hand, your lips aren't even moving. But the, the, once again, thank you very much for the proclamation, and I look forward to seeing all of you at, on the 11th, where we can all be together and celebrate our nation's veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Commissioner Comments, and we'll begin with Commissioner Reddy.
Sure, thank you. Not too much. There is a ton of construction going on around town, so hopefully you found your detours and a way to get from one end of town to the other. The great thing about Manhattan is no matter how much construction is, it still only takes about 20 minutes to get from one end to the other. So, you know, we've, we've done a pretty good job of navigating all of the intersections. And, you know, we had the NBAF, not NBAF, sorry, North Campus Corridor Ceremony a few days ago, and that speaks to how well we all work together, but also how much we've invested in all of that infrastructure, and how many people it took, and how many government agencies it took. And we are near the end, but the end is about two or three more years. So be patient. We have a lot going on around town, and many, many events also this weekend. We won't have our next city commission, well, we have a work session, but before then will be Halloween. So lots of things going on outside and downtown, as well as the mall and West Loop and all kinds of areas. So I just wanted to say be cautious, have a wonderful time at all of these wonderful events, and enjoy the weather, and just be careful with all of the new traffic. We have sporting events coming, and we'll have lots of visitors in town who are also trying to figure out which way to go. Roundabouts are hard enough, but it's harder when you have all these cones everywhere, too. So with that said, thank you.
So I just, I, I guess I'll touch on the Afghan resettlement effort that's been ongoing. There, I was just reading an email, and I was, I just got an email. We'll have some new people arriving in the next, their, their flights are booked. And we'll be here the 25th, it looks like, if that makes sense. I was just looking in my email. So, that, that first family that arrived two weeks ago is, is getting settled in, doing well, and look forward to some good weather. Maybe we can go out to the zoo or something. But more families will be coming over the next few months, and it's just been amazing, the effort and the hospitality and the welcoming people have rallied around. The Flint Hills Veterans Coalition has helped, and with Fatima and others trying to navigate that process on the, on the upstream end of getting people safe and, and secure into the, the pipeline. So want to thank you guys for that. And the community, there's been over 200 people that have stepped up to, to volunteer in some way or some capacity. And then thankfully, the, there's a faith leaders from every, every, every denomination that you, or major religion are, are working together, and identifying how to meet those needs with expectation that we'll have 75 or 100 folks here by sometime early next year. And that being said, we also yesterday had a whole lot of excitement and energy in the K-State Foundation, at the K-State Foundation, and a summit discuss, discussing the Food Systems Plan. And so for the first time, a lot of people that have been working very diligently for decades in serving people that need food, or access to food, or, or making food, or just everybody that likes to eat food. We all were together talking about the systems in place. There was over 69 individuals representing all the significant stakeholders, talking about a, a way forward. So it's a productive plan. That, that is, and then I'll let Mark talk about, we went to the AUSA, and I think there was some significant discussions there, but I'll, I'll let Mark cover that.
Yeah, we, Commissioner Estabrick and I, along with several people from the chamber and a few, uh, public individuals, went to the AUSA conference in Washington DC and had a nice chance to talk with the, get a briefing from the state's military lobbyist down in Washington DC who keeps an eye on all things Fort Riley. And, and there's going to be an opportunity, I believe, for the, the community to show their support again for Fort Riley in a, in the next time they do kind of a, a evaluation of Fort Riley and how, how its mission is, capabilities and ability to take on more or less soldiers and such here. So, so stay tuned for, for that, and hopefully we'll be able to create a good synergistic effect with the fort and generate some more positive information for the Department of Defense to keep Fort Riley as strong as possible.
And I think we're all committed to that. We're glad to hear your report about that trip. I just need to say that I'm on Veterans Day. I probably won't ride on the Old Engine Number One, just because it is so tall. I have a new knee from seven weeks ago, and that step is too big. It was too big. I've asked the fireman to bring a stool in the past. It worked. But just so you know, I'll be, I'll, I'm going to try and do the viewing stand, and I always go to breakfast at the American Legion, and so I'll do everything else, but I just can't get up in the fire engine yet next year. This last Wednesday, I was invited and had the opportunity to join the Peace Memorial Auditorium Fundraising Group. They've kind of, they wanted to celebrate their success. And it's the money that they raised and the money that the city put in, in order to finish doing a number of things in the auditorium that Kurt, I mean, who'd have thought? Some of these things are so, really big deals and are so expensive. So lighting, and I think we still have some audio to go. There's a basic audio level, but I, I think there's a, a little bit more that needs to be done. And so it was just nice to, to celebrate a success for them, you know, some of them are getting older. And so I think that they wanted to just have a kind of closure. And, and I'm sure they're, I think they're willing to continue to raise money, but they felt like they just needed to draw the line and then kind of regroup. And so Dave Fisher is the chair of that. Stormy Kennedy invited me and the whole history, Kathy Debalkowski with the Preservation Alliance, and Linda Glasgow, and Barbara, anyway, Pareski from the museum, and just a number of people that were instrumental in, in throwing that, keeping that ball up in the air to keep raising money. It was a, it was really a big effort for a private group to raise that much money. So that's all for me. Thanks.
Okay, I'm looking forward to, you know, kicking off what I call the holiday season with, with some of these Halloween events. And this year, on the 24th of October, there'll be the Second Annual Howl and the Prowl in City Park. If you missed that last year, you know, you bring your animals in, decorate them, and they walk around trick or treat. I had a great time last year at that event. And of course, there'll be the Homecoming Parade this year. They'll be passing out candy, and they'll be doing trick or treating down in Aggieville. And we've also got Spooktacular, you know, out, out at the zoo. So there's all kinds of great events for the kids for Halloween this year. So looking forward to taking part in all of those. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is the Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments about the Consent Agenda?
I have no, I mean, I'm willing to make a motion to get it.
We need to get public comments.
Okay, that would be a good, important part.
I was just going to acknowledge it's, it's good to see Mr. Dave Colburn reappointed. He's been a real big advocate for a long time, Pathfinder, and I, I had the privilege of serving he, on the school board with him. But it's good to see that he's still dedicated to the, to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
And on that note, you know, please, if you want to be on a board, check the city website. There's always openings. Always tough thing to find people to serve on the board. So I'm glad Dave put that back in again because he's helped me out with my bikes a couple times down there at Pathfinder. So is there any public comment tonight? Okay, seeing no public comment on the Consent Agenda, we can now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the commission adopt the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
I wanted to just, I wanted to make a comment, so I waited, I needed to wait till after the motion, so. But I would like to just say that I do support the updates to the Douglas Center Advisory Board and the updated bylaws for the Frederick Douglass Recreation Center as we go forth. I think it's, those are good additions. And also, what was another, one of those? Well, that's enough. Thank you.
And just to clarify on that, since Linda was mentioning that, those bylaws are being updated because, well, they were basically archaic and required that everybody appointed to that board was right there in the ward districts. And of course, that facility under Dave's guidance has, has just become a citywide asset, and people from all over the city are going there. So we had to adjust the way that thing was managed. So it's a great thing. So we have a motion and a second. At this point, City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, then we'll move on to the general agenda. And the first item on that is a second consideration of an economic development agreement for Elsley Holdings LLC, a DBA, the prime company. And I believe Jason Hildreth's deputy city manager is going to begin the presentation.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As you mentioned, this is second consideration. A couple of weeks ago, October 5th, we had first consideration. The PowerPoint that you have in front of you that's in your packet is also from a couple of weeks ago. The chamber put this together to provide an overview of the LC Holdings and the Prime Place. We anticipate them investing over $1.3 million in their facility, creating 13 new jobs in the community. We're looking to track those over the next eight years as they develop this site just off Vanessa Drive, just west of the home care and hospice facility there on Vanessa. Again, founded in 2005, they did some local projects, and they've, they've really went national from there. They have several employees outside the community that they plan to bring into the community. They had some work examples and some incentive package details here from the state of Kansas. Just as a reminder, we're looking at 13 jobs that we're looking to incentivize here in Manhattan at $5,000 per job, total package, $65,000 from the city. The $381,485 is the state of Kansas package to bring that development here to Manhattan. Just again, some summary slide there of aligning this package with our economic development strategies, looking to assist a homegrown company doing business around the country to bring talent back to Manhattan. We'd be happy to stand for any questions. I know you heard from the developer and the chamber a couple of weeks ago, general support from the commission, but we're here for a second consideration per our policy on an economic development request.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the commission?
No major comments. I think, like we said last time, of the $65,000 from the Economic Development Funds, I feel is a good investment considering the state and what they're putting in, as well as the 13 jobs and the $5,000 per job, everything that's already in the, in the contract with, with LC. And it's good to work with the chamber on this as well. I think that was one of the things we did when we had the Economic Development Funds, and it's worked well for us in the past. Sometimes, you know, it didn't work so well, but this seems like it would be a good, good investment. So I look forward to supporting it once again.
Okay, and I think that the one thing the slide doesn't highlight, those 13 jobs, I think, were projected to pay a starting salary of somewhere around $71,000 and up. And that's quite significant. And that's quite significant because a lot, a lot of people worry about, you know, us bringing in companies and having less than a, a living wage. But this one clearly, you know, just really fits our economic development strategy and it's an excellent use of those funds.
I wondered, is the $71,000 in the agreement that that's what you're going to be looking for as you, on down the road, when we start looking back and evaluating, we're actually going to be able to see that, right?
Yeah. We will look at each job created at each given year.
Yeah.
And we'll also make sure the wage, the average is where they anticipated.
Thank you.
Yep.
And it goes for 10 years?
They have, well, essentially, we gave them 10 years. They said they could create these within eight.
Okay.
So even if in the first year they created all 13, we would only pay for the couple of jobs that they said they would initially create. So each year, we will compensate them through year eight for 13 jobs.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no other commission comments, are there any public comments on this particular topic? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close public comments and we can entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we authorize you and the city clerk to execute an economic development incentive agreement with the LC Holdings LLC doing business as the prime company.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebrock?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and then we move on now to what is the last agenda on the item for tonight, which is discussion on the final draft of the strategic plan. And Jared, who's been working hard on this for months, is going to be the initial presenter, I believe.
Thank you, mayor. Commissioners, about nine months, yeah, we've been working on the strategic planning process since January when Planning Next came on board. Jamie and Sarah, who've visited and zoomed with us many times throughout this process, are here tonight virtually if there are any questions. I'm going to run through most of these slides. We had a good conversation a couple of weeks ago at the September 28th work session where we presented the strategic plan, at a glance document, which was a summary of the, the framework of the plan and some of the goals and actions. And you provided a lot of good feedback there. We certainly wrote all that down and, you know, took that into consideration. We didn't make any changes with the full plan because we wanted to provide that opportunity for the public to provide input to before we came back to you tonight like we are, to get that final feedback so we can bring, so we can make those changes based off your comments and any comments from the public and then come back with a plan for adoption. So I am going to go over that, the full draft plan review that occurred. I'll provide a little overview there. I'll go through some of the comments that we heard from the public. We did multiple opportunities for any member of the public to provide that feedback. Want to take any final feedback from you all. We can, of course, open it up for public comment tonight. And then we'll go ahead and make those changes based off your comments and bring it back on November 16th for consideration of adoption. So we put out the full draft plan. It was almost 60 pages. There's quite a few sections within it that go into quite some details. I do want to first just point out the acknowledgement page there at the beginning of the full plan. There's a lot of people who provided a lot of time and energy and effort and input into this process. Not only our city commissioners through multiple city commissioner retreats, we had many staff interviews, stakeholder interviews with folks in, in the community. We had the community committee appointed by you all and we also had a staff technical committee. Those two committees did provide letters on behalf of those committees that were provided in your packet and we planned to finalize those and put them in the final plan document. Just to provide a little context of, you know, the mindsets and everything that, you know, those groups went through throughout the process and the end product for the community to kind of get a sense from them and hear from them. We go into that executive summary there at the beginning of the full plan document, which you saw in the at a glance document. It really just gives everyone a one-page snapshot of what the plan is all about, the vision, the goals, the community values that were created and the new mission for the organization. We have an introduction process, or introduction section within there that really just describes why we needed a strategic plan, why strategic planning is important, why we felt that in 2020 and then beginning in 2021 was the opportune time to pursue this for the city of Manhattan. So we went into some detail there throughout that section. We wanted to highlight the process too, just what, what did we, what engagement process did we go through with the community, with our stakeholders, with our staff and the commission to help the reader, if they're interested, understand how this came to be, why we drafted these things the way we did and how did we get the feedback and input throughout that process? Then we go into the, the full framework of the plan, which again is those vision, values, goals and mission. And then the action agenda, that's really the heart of the plan. It sets forth, you know, what we need to do over the next five years. This is intended to be a five-year strategic plan, so it goes into detail, goals one through five, each action, and then each action has a description. So that was some of that new information that you provided. That's a little bit more deeper into the plan than that at a glance document and it provides guidance to the public, the city commission and any staff member who's reading this plan and wants to understand what a certain action means, what we're trying to achieve. And then it'll also help us during the implementation process over the next five years to track those actions, to provide feedback and input regularly to the public on where we're at in these areas. There was another section within there that we wanted to, you know, talk about at this time. We wanted to kind of memorialize what were the core services of all of our departments for the city at that time when the strategic planning process was, was in place. There's a lot of things that we want to do in the community. There is a lot of desires of our community members, of our staff, of the city commission to improve the community. But we understand that we are doing a lot as there is today. There are a lot of services and programs that we're offering. There is a lot of requirements that we have as city staff with the services that we provide. There's a lot of programs that, that we offer our community. So we do need to understand that there are trade-offs with the strategic plan. We, the community wants us to continue to provide those quality services. There are also goals and objectives and, and actions of this plan that are going to take time, resources, money and energy. So we do need to balance that accordingly moving forward. And then we wrap up the, the full plan document with a section on implementation. This is something that we need to institutionalize as a, as an organization, as a community with our city commission and talk with you on an annual basis, if not more than that, to let you know where we're at on the plan, look at prioritization of the actions on an annual basis. There will be some appendices within the plan document that we will provide you in November for final adoption. We have an expanded process version. The process version in the, the full plan document is a couple pages, but we have a full, really kind of enhanced section that really just goes into the specific details of every event, all the things that we did, all the numbers, how many people we reached out to. And then we're also going to include all 24,000 pieces of input if you really want to dive into that and see all that information. Because we do think it's important, our community committee thought that was important to be included. And then if you recall, we did do an environmental scan at the beginning of this process to do a deep dive into the community and look at demographics and statistics to see some trends in the community. So we're going to include that as well. I have with us tonight Dustin Dunst. He's one of our co-chairs of our community committee. He's going to come up and speak. Fanny was going to try and make it tonight, but she couldn't due to work, so she actually provided a short video that I'm going to play just for all of you. You haven't really been able to interact with them like I have and Planning Next has, but in the, in the letter that you saw, there was a lot of effort that went into this process. I do commend our, our committee. There was over 30 volunteers that you all appointed. The, the goal was really to reach, you know, every corner of the community and we tried our best to do that. And they were taking their time out of, you know, their weeks and their nights to, to reach people, to get them involved, to provide them the opportunity to provide input on this plan. A lot of feedback went into it and they, you know, they were happy to, to see it all come to fruition. So I'm going to play Fanny's video real quick and then after that Dustin's going to hop up and chat real quick. Hope it plays.
Good evening, city commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing me to submit a video. I wish I could have given my remarks in person and I wish I could have filmed this in a more formal setting, but with the global supply chain shortages and owning and operating a grocery store during this very turbulent time, I haven't been able to do much but focus on my, my business. Now, I want to start off by providing an anecdote. So when Planning Next and the community committee met for the first time, they asked us to email them if we were interested in serving as co-chairs. I believe eight of us applied and ultimately Dustin and I were selected to serve in this role. Before I knew Dustin as a co-chair, I knew him first as Mr. Dunst because he was my academic counselor at Mahan High School. You know, high school was a incredibly difficult time for me, especially being a first generation student of color. You know, I was flying the plane as I was building it, but someone who always had my back was Dustin. So when I was applying for colleges, one of, when I was applying for colleges, I applied or I submitted my documents to every single college I was interested in except NYU, New York University, because I felt that such a prestigious university would not even give me a look. A few months later, I already accepted my admissions to a different college when NYU informed me that they accepted me into their sports management program. Someone believed in me more than I believed in myself. And because of that, I am here now, about eight to 10 years later, standing side by side with my high school academic counselor, serving as co-chair to our city's first ever strategic plan. You know, we are at a crossroads, obviously, and we have been for quite some time. Our population here is stagnant. It has been this way for 10 years. And, you know, on a state level, I once heard a state legislator say, our largest export in Kansas is our own people. We're struggling. We're struggling to recruit and retain talent. And if you look at the letters drafted by the community committee and the technical staff committee, you'll see that we, we both mentioned that we want Mahan, Kansas. Our vision for Mahan, Kansas is for it to become a thriving and inclusive place for all. And we can get there, but to do so, we need to believe in our own people, in all of our people, like Dustin believed in me. More importantly, we need to back up our belief in our own people by making sure their basic needs are met. We can't even begin to talk about a thriving Mahan, Kansas if we have a significant portion of our community struggling to just even survive, struggling to be able to pay rent, to be able to feed their family. This strategic plan is not a perfect roadmap, but it is such a good start. And I think it can address many of these issues that we've been facing. But this will only work if it's followed, if organizations who have the privilege and power to make an impact, if elected bodies such as yourself follow this. If that does happen, I have no doubt that we can get closer to what some call man happiness. Thank you so much for your time and have a good night.
Well, certainly appreciate Fanny providing that. Dustin's going to come up too and talk briefly as well about a little perspective from the community committee. Hey guys, obviously Fanny's words were far too kind, but I am very proud of her and have been honored to serve as a co-chair with her. It's really has been fun to reconnect and do that. What I will add to what she had to say is I want to thank the 30-plus members of that community committee that you all appointed originally eight or nine months ago. Those people went out and tried to connect with everybody they knew to get them to come down and get involved in one of our either in-person or on Zoom engagement sessions to try to get them to give their feedback about what they liked about Manhattan and what they might want to see improved. And through that, we got thousands of pieces of data from every corner of Manhattan. That was the hope. And then thanks to Planning Next for taking that and leading us through that process and then taking that data, organizing it, giving it back to us so that we could present to the community a second time to try to get some edits and prioritize the things that were in there. And so the, the results of that are the document that you now have and that we hope will drive decisions into the future to make Manhattan better for everyone. This document really was created by the citizens at all levels and is a testament to the way government should work. Thank you to the commissioners for this opportunity. And as I turn it back over to Jared, thank you, Jared, for all your hard work on this. You really are a rock star. Thanks, man.
Thank you, Dustin.
I do want to acknowledge too, our staff technical committee. We did have 23 staff members that got together. They met regularly, just like our community committee. We even got to have that joint committee session back in May to really talk through this plan, provide some expertise. In their letter, they too wanted to thank the community for their efforts and participation because without them, this plan would just be something that was derived by staff and we knew that we wanted to get that community input and that community perspective to see where their vision was and where they wanted to go. All of that was created so that, you know, staff can take this and use it as a tool to move the community forward and get us towards that vision. So we did put out and publish the, the draft plan on Friday, October 1st, and we kept it open for a little over two weeks. We had a public open house on October 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. There was a solid seven of us that attended, but if you exclude Dustin and I, there was really actually only five that attended. But it was an opportunity for folks to come in and provide feedback in person to city staff. And Linda was there too, so if you, if you remove Commissioner Morse, really only four folks from the public came to, to talk with us. But we had some good conversation. You know, these things are good to do at the end to provide that opportunity. Jamie and Sarah, you know, had mentioned in a lot of the plans they do, usually as everything's wrapped up, that, that push to provide public input kind of slows down a little bit. But we did get a lot of feedback on our online forum and the survey. During that process, you know, we pushed it out through our Engage MHK website. There's a, over 900 people who have signed up on that site, so we were pushing that information out to them. We used our insider newsletters, well, social media and word of mouth again, to just let folks know that the draft was out there. During that time, over 1,000 people visited the project website to check out that review period in, in some way. Again, we put out not only the full plan, but the at a glance, over 400 people clicked on that plan and, and either downloaded it or reviewed it during that time period, which is great to see. Another 128 folks took a look at that at a glance document. We, we had an online forum where people could provide comments, they could reply to each other, they could like and dislike and, and provide all that feedback related to the plan in a general sense and where there was about 20 contributions to that online. That was in your packet as well that we provided in addition as an attachment on Monday after that period closed. There was some good conversation on that forum. There wasn't a lot of conversation, but there was some, some good thoughts and, and feedback from individuals. And then you had individuals come in and say, well, I disagree. or "Maybe we should look at it this way." But then there was just some general comments and good feedback about the plan and some areas that we could, folks thought that we can improve. We did also do a prioritization survey. We did want to just provide one more opportunity for the public to add a little bit more input to this plan. So we provided them a list of the 46 action items of the plan, and we asked them to choose the top seven. During that period where we were pushing that out, over 250 folks visited that survey. About half of them chose to fill it out. So we got 123 responses. I provided the rankings, you know, of who provided their top-ranked actions. This is in no means our final prioritization matrix. We only got over 100, which is good, and it provides a good indication of just kind of where people are thinking. But our Community Committee and our City Commission talked to us during their retreat and our meetings with the Community Committee. And ultimately, once this plan is adopted, we're going to work together with staff and the City Commission to develop our prioritization matrix. That's going to be fluid over time. It's a five-year plan. Certain actions are going to, again, take time, resources. Some of them, we can't do all at once, so we need, some we need to do first before we can do another. So we're going to develop that implementation matrix, and that'll be used on the project website and as we meet with you all annually to discuss the plan. But you could see, not very surprising, a lot of good feedback on some of these top-ranked actions. Everyone wants to have good streets, so Rob was probably glad to see that. Flood mitigation efforts are always important too. The bike ped plan, a lot of other things. And then you could just kind of see the continued ranking going down over the 46 action items. But good feedback, we're going to take that in as we develop our implementation matrix. So I don't know if you'd like to ask for public comment first, but really, the main priority of this discussion item was to get your all-final feedback so we can take any edits into the plan document and create those final edits and come back to you in November. Again, you know, there's the five goals that you can see there. These goals are interconnected. You know, they're not mutually exclusive, so we are, they're all going to work together to realize the vision of the plan and the way we set forth the actions within them. So however you guys would like to provide any feedback, I'll be writing that down and we'll make any edits. I would like to, you know, if one individual has a comment and other people agree, so we can see if there's a majority of commissioners who are in favor of something, we can come back and make those edits too. So I do appreciate that conversation amongst you all as well. And I think this computer's about to blow up.
It's, Eric's filter needs cleaned.
I know, that's projected. This is something else, I think.
So I have kind of a suggestion. Maybe you can clarify this for me, and it's unnecessary to make a change. But I don't know if you're able to pull up the actual draft plan or no?
I can, yeah.
Have you got it right there? Okay, so on the page that talks about, let me see. So it's page 10, and it's the community assessment. It lists population.
Jared, do you want to bring it up so the
I can, yeah.
community can see it as well?
It's okay. It's really kind of, maybe I'm the only one that reads it this way.
Should have less pages. Might not take as long.
58 pages. All right. So right there, that 67,000 number, what number is that speaking to?
So that includes all military, veterans, retirees, and civilian employees. So that number was provided by Fort Riley, but it does include retirees within the region. It is a regional number.
I guess, so when I read, I'm still confused by that answer because when I read that, it looks like that's saying 67,000 is the Fort Riley population. And rather, this is, you're talking about it as a, that's our population with Manhattan's population with Fort Riley, right?
I think they're saying that that's how many people Fort Riley considers that they serve and employ.
Okay.
In this region, there are 67,000 people affiliated with Fort Riley, and that includes active military, their family members, any veterans in the area, retirees, and the civilian employees. So 67,000 folks within this region affiliated with Fort Riley.
Okay.
We could certainly adjust that to make sure it's more clear.
It's just a nitpicky, I think, but when somebody glances at the population, it's confusing, given the census in the region and Fort Riley.
Because that number's going to include people in Junction City and Milford and all of that. So it might be interesting to break that out. I have to agree with Aaron on that to say, you know, this is the population of the post as in, you know, active-duty soldiers, families, DA, civilians, and this is the rest of it. Because, you know, maybe I'm double-counted in that, you know, being a veteran and using some of the facilities on Fort Riley that, you know, I could be in that count and also in the city count.
One of the questions that I had when you looked at the top-ranked priorities is number two is, is address flooding. But number 13 is, or number 14 is implement the stormwater master plan. So I get that when the people address flooding, I think they must be talking about Wildcat Creek versus Aggieville and Sonic and Third Street flooding then, assuming.
Yeah, I imagine that one is more specifically related to the bodies of water surrounding and the impacts of flooding on Wildcat Creek, Big Blue River, Kansas River, things like our Wildcat Creek Resiliency Project, levy mitigation, properties specifically affected by those. Whereas the stormwater master plan is going to address a lot of more urban inundation from things like that.
And that may be something that not everybody understands what the stormwater master plan would consist of and what the purpose of it is, which would explain why it's it's a lower priority for some than just, yeah, the bigger picture, which is harder to solve.
Have we not had a stormwater master plan in the past? I thought we did.
We do.
Yeah, we have one.
That action is related to implementing it.
I see.
I know there's a lot of phases that Brian and his team have that we need to do over the course of the next five to 10 years to improve on that stormwater management.
Okay, good.
Jared, I have, sorry, Mark, were you done?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay. I have a couple of comments. I brought this up, excuse me, last time as well, but you said you didn't make any revisions since then. For 1.12, if we can separate the two for identifying a spending plan for the economic recovery and relief sales tax as one, like 1.12, and then 1.13 being identify spending plan for the American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds, because one deals with sales tax where we do have a lot of control over. And the ARPA funds is delegated by the federal agencies and state agencies. So if we can separate those, it might be better because both of them will have different plans.
Yeah, they'll both have, yeah, different implementation to it as well and tracking, so it makes sense to separate those.
And the other one is 1.11. It says engage, engage with Riley County and the Riley County Police Department on its current and future structure and statutory processes, sorry. I think that that's good. I am concerned about the word statutory because I think there's a lot of policies that we can even develop as far as the makeup or the funding and all of these things. I don't know about the, we can work on the statutory process, but there's so much more we can do in between all of that with Riley County and the city of Manhattan. So I wasn't sure because that speaks to a law where we should all be working towards changing as opposed to policies, whereas law board or city commissioners or county commissioners can work on together.
Yeah, it's certainly, the statutory process is something we don't have any specific oversight over. The intention, you know, behind the action item is to just start engaging and having those conversations. And like you said, there are other processes that we could improve or talk about, but just acknowledging that and trying to starting to have those conversations. This is certainly one of those action items when you're looking at that implementation strategy where it's a long-range action item that's going to take some time, some conversation, some research, conversations with not only the county and RCPD, but even the community.
So the only one I would like to maybe look at is removing the word statutory and look at all of the processes, and statutory would be part of that. But I don't want that to be the end goal because there's so much. I mean, that might be, but for a five-year plan, we can't even get everybody to the table locally, let alone state. So I wasn't sure how to revise that, but I agree with what they're saying, but I would like to look at that just a little bit closer. But I do want to, you know, say that this is a lot of work, and I really do appreciate all of the input. I looked at some of the comments, and, you know, we're always in the deep of everything. Let me discuss these things. But some of the feedback from the community within their own sphere of their own space, the comments are very different. So because they don't understand, like, stormwater systems, all of these master plans we have, all of these things we have going. But I'm glad they had a chance to participate in the conversation. And for us to look at where they see it from their eyes as priorities, sometimes we think the priorities are very different because we're here all the time. But from the communities, I mean, it's good to see that they see streets, maintain streets, as the number-one priority. And so that's what we try to focus on as much as we do. But some of these other things I would not have thought would have risen to the top seven, like the mitigation efforts, all of these things. We think people aren't paying attention, but some of them really do worry about their areas. And I'm sure it took a long time to compile all of this and to put it in one place. But overall, I'm pretty happy with the outcome of the mission plan, the value system, the values that were placed in there and the document itself, as well as the data and the language and how everything is worded, makes a huge difference for not only us, but for future commissioners as well.
With a first strategic plan like this, it really, there's a lot that went into it, a lot of inputs. You can see the 46 action items. We narrowed that down by even more. We were at 70, I think, one point, but we needed to, you know, make it more general and, but really dive into the specific nature that folks were looking at. This, we think this is a really good foundational for a strategic plan. Then in five years, and when we make progress on this, we can build on it and really start honing in probably on a lot more of the specific areas.
Nice job. I'm sure there's more comments to come, but I think from the first time and now, I already see some change. And it's good to have the 58-page document in front of us so that we can really understand all of it. It's more clear, it's more concise, but there's a lot of meat in each of those areas for us to work on. Thanks.
See, and I don't have a problem with leaving that statutory in there because some of that is just wordage that it has to be changed at the state. And a prime example is all this discussion on the citizen-at-large positions. You know, the legal people were able to, because of the way that's written in the statutory process, to say that a commissioner is also a citizen. So therefore, a commissioner can fill the citizen-at-large positions. And of course, one of my recommendations has always been to have the state change that to say the elected officials, and that would apply to the county also, elected officials cannot serve in the citizen-at-large position. So I think that's important, but I also know where Commissioner Reddy's coming from. You don't want to go too down, too far down the road there because who knows what they'll do in Topeka, you know, with the various things. Because we almost ran afoul of that a couple of years ago, but I think Representative Dodson was able to, you know, make certain bad things didn't happen on that, so.
It's certainly a balance to figure out how into the weeds you get. And we had a lot of those conversations with our staff and the Community Committee on.
But I think, you know, I know that, you know, our own legal office spent a great deal of time just tweaking the way that statutory thing is written because there's a lot of errors in it. And so, you know, I see that as a long-range process where we start with just some simple things, you know, clarify the wordage and things of that nature, which if the county agrees with us and we send it to the state, I think it would go through without a problem. And then not address some of the other things where we can get really derailed.
Well, and the only reason I also bring it up is because there was a time, at least during my tenure here, when there was talk about making it into a sheriff, an elected position.
Yeah, and that we don't want to see happen, and I agree with that. That's the danger.
I don't know who's going to put their stuff out there. So that was my concern about that.
I would, it is, that item is number 17 on the ranked actions, so it's not the highest priority. I also think there are other discussions we need to have with Riley County. And the only one mentioned is this RCPD. And because I think we need to have conversations with them about flooding. And we know Wildcat Creek rips down through Riley County and Fort Riley, and it's not just a Manhattan problem. So it turns out, because we're at the bottom of the basin and at the convergence of the three rivers, it, we can't, it's not the only thing we need to talk to Riley County about. We need more economic development from the county. And so there are more things that need to be talked about, and I just thought we should mention that. I agree with Commissioner Reddy about the need to separate 1.11 and 1.12. What were the numbers you said?
1.1.
Yeah, 12 and 13, I think, is what you said. I think we want to track ARPA because it's going to be multiple years before that money is spent or can be spent, has to be spent. And it should be tracked separately from the sales tax. And so I want to stress that. And I think that the communication of the implementation is important. So I think we need, just to be able to track the strategic plan, certainly at an annual review, but at any point, being able to, whether it's on the web, we ought to be able to call it up and look at it and see, well, where are we right now on that? And I don't mean in-depth, but just being able to track it because it is going to be a major personnel investment as time goes on. And we need to, you know, there are things that come up through the year that aren't going to be in our strategic plan. And so we're going to have to, maybe we want to track the add-ons. I don't know what they are, and certainly we can't look into the crystal ball necessarily, but I think that that always ends up being an exception. And it takes our staff time, it takes our money and our general fund and really twists it a little bit so that we can't, it's not as cut and dried as you might think it is just by calling it the budget. And, let's see. We've been working for some years on the bicycle and pedestrian system plan. And is it something we're never going to be finished with? Like, we're going to be finished with the North Campus Corridor in three, four years. But the bicycle and pedestrian plan, system plan, it seems to me there's constantly, it's, we're always adding to it.
There's a lot to that plan.
Yeah.
We went through that process in 2019, and the commission adopted it early 2020. It's a 20-year plan. It goes into not only, like you said, bicycle infrastructures throughout the community, but pedestrian infrastructure and trails as well. That's something that we're going to be working on. We'll pass this first strategic plan. But we certainly, you know, we saw the importance of funding that plan and the creation of that action, and we saw it, you know, rise there in the top of that prioritization survey. I think it popped up in there in top four just because mobility was so important and such a key thing from our community. So as we do infrastructure projects, we're always needing to be referring to that plan to see where we can make those improvements, to fill any gaps, increase service in those areas and bike ped.
And I'm committed to addressing flooding and continuing to pursue mitigation of flooding in the community. I'd like, I, that's going to be hard to track all by itself too because flooding, in my observation, has popped up different places when it wasn't even expected. in my observation, has popped up different places when it wasn't even expected. And I, I would like us to adopt a kind of a do not harm, do no harm policy of some kind so that we do not have people putting people in harms way. And I don't know how to do that. I don't see us doing it. But I think any new development in a flood area must be the responsibility of the owner and not the subsequent buyer or the public. And that's what's been happening. The developer walks away from the project, the subsequent owner, five or 10 years later, is stuck with the cost of the flooding. And so, and, and the public, look at the costs we incur as the city for a flood event. And I, I wish there were, I want us to do what we can to minimize the impact on, on the public and the costs. The cost of the 2018 flood were horrendous for the whole community, our nonprofit and as well as our government costs. And I'd like, you know, sometimes we talk about an annual review and an update. I'd like for us to be really diligent about doing that and not letting those slip away so that we actually have, or can look at our accomplishments as, as we move through the, the, the five years, because that's, we're only talking five years here. And anyway, I think we have to start somewhere. This is a good place to start. I mean, I can, I mean, I was disappointed that I didn't see anything about annexation in here or growth of the city. And so that's something that's not here and, but I don't know, you know, I can, we can get started on this without it, but certainly that's something we all know is going to come, no matter what direction in, in the community we look. We're, we've talked for years about annexing south of the 177 Bridge. We've talked about, I mean, we just have growth issues and so I, I don't know how to address it in this strategic plan, but this is at a higher, a high level and, you know, just, there are things that are missing, but we have to get started.
Julie, I just wanted to ask a question. Now, this, the heading on that slide on these top-ranked actions says 123 responses. So this priority list was created out of 123 responses?
Yes.
Okay, and, and to me, that's not statistically significant.
No.
Based upon the number of people here. So, so while I appreciate the rankings and I, and I find it interesting, I'm not so sure that reflects, you know, the real picture. And so I, I would, I would put some real scrutiny on there and, and I think as Commissioner Reddy said, I guess we look at it a little bit different because we're immersed in this, the staff even more so on, on, on the daily running of the city. And so when you look at this, you know, while, while this is a, a great list, there may be some other knowledge that needs to be put into it and I hope this isn't going to drive the prioritization list.
No, it, it, it's not intended to. It's an, it was an opportunity for the public to provide a little bit more feedback. Certainly 123 folks is good information to have, but you're right, it's not our, one of our community surveys that we do where we do ensure and sample in the right way and make sure that there's a, a confidence level there in that data that you can generalize it with the public. It'll, it'll certainly, you know, help as we go along. Knowing 123 people think this way is helpful to know, but staff isn't going to be looking at this and then that's how they're going to start creating their list by any means. But it is helpful to, to know because there are some good things on there that are surprising to see that, that so many people thought that way.
Okay, I agree with that and then just to be sure that I get my vote in with Commissioner Reddy and Commissioner Morris on separating that sales tax and ARPA funds.
Sure.
Because that seems to make sense. That's a great recommendation.
Can we find out? Can you provide us the number of votes that those 123, what did they, what did they, what were the seven they picked? I mean, I'm curious about some of these also.
So it is in your attachment. So as an example, out of the 123 responses, 50 people chose action 3.4, continue to maintain city streets. So that percentage is there. So you can kind of see where those fall.
So that's in the expanded?
Yep, I can pull it up real quick.
No, I, I don't want to see it now.
It's a telephone graph, isn't it?
Yes.
There was the brief report, there. There was the abbreviated report and then there's an expanded one, so, okay.
I was just going to say, you know, that action prioritization survey really has no bearing in my mind on, on all the, the 24,000 pieces of unique information the community did to organize the 46 actions around five goals. Now, taking those into the prioritization survey is a different thing and getting that statistically sampled in a way that is reflective of the community going forward. Those are, those are additional tasks in the future as, as far as I understand. I don't look at this list as, I mean, I don't know if Rob took the test 123 times and said streets are awesome, right? Like, I, I don't know that and so I'm not putting much faith into this list. But what I do want to say is back to the.
I'll check with Rob, but I don't, I don't think.
You don't think he did it 123 times?
I think he would have done it more than 123.
Yeah, if he would have known that, yeah, there would have been maybe a couple thousand votes on that one.
But the, the part of this that also brings value and, and maybe drove us, you said it's been nine months you've been working on this. You've been working on it for more than a year because we had to do the RFP and we had to talk about what the goal, really this has started with the first goal retreat and the follow-up that because you showed us some slides and tried to put some things together and we wanted that. And then you said, well, we need to do something bigger and different and more comprehensive and get community input. And so we, we've been working on this for two years, really. So this is part of that dri, the part that drove the process to what is the community goals that we're talking about also was the staff needs, the, the excellence initiative, and I think that's a really good component of this. The second, the end of the document, the last 15 pages or so are, are, show those disparities in the workforce. They show there's 27% female, you know, employees versus the, the 47 to 50% that are in the community, that we're mismatched with diversity in, in our staffing. So if I read, um, let's see, if I read this, oh, and it goes through each department, which is nice, but if I read the mission that we, we put the well-being of people at the heart of everything we do through well-trained, highly motivated professional city staff, we move the community forward in a way that is open, welcoming, inclusive, forward-thinking, innovative, accountable, transparent, fiscally responsible, contributory to a high quality of life, amenities and opportunities, protective of natural resources and the environment. I think that's pretty significant because in two years ago, nobody at the table could say those things or have anything in a way that shaped a roadmap. And so that's, I think you and everyone else has been able to put that input in there and that, what, 24,000 pieces of, of input exists somewhere that people can dig through and I think that gives the credibility. It's not just one commission's whim or, or the next commission can say, well, I want to go in this direction. They, they certainly can try, but they have to speak up against the 24,000 pieces of input that went into the, the community's effort for this. So I, I appreciate all that work and also recognize that it started with the organizational excellence and the city staff and that's, that's why it's still a, a top goal. I mean, that's really where this, the, the origin for this need was a comprehensive strategic plan that involved the organization.
You know, I just wanted to say, I think when I look at the rankings as well as the strategic plan, each time we have our commissioner board retreats, this isn't too far off from what we've been discussing. So it's good to know that there are a lot of common pieces to it because if we look at any of our retreat goals, they fall into some of these categories already. So it's good that, first of all, to get that affirmation from the commi, community and also to make sure that we have a more robust plan from the community because that was just coming from commissioners. But I mean, Aggieville Business District or the Manhattan businesses, flood mitigation, these are things that we typically have on our, on our retreats, but we've never had a document that we can carry on to the next one. And the priorities are such that they're not, like I said, too far off, but it's again falls on commissioners at the time, what's on, what's on our plate, what kind of federal fundings do we have, what kind of state fundings do we have, but they're all going to fall into one of these pieces. And I think Commissioner Morris was saying, how do we keep track of it? When we have our retreats, oftentimes the following year, we get a checklist about accomplished, accomplished, or completed, 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 in progress, completed, complete. So that's something that I would like to see for our own progress and for commissioners under each of these items on the goals, where are we at, you know, year one, year two, year five, and what, what else can we do? Otherwise, we won't know if we're making progress and that progress might be small. Last year, we had a pandemic, so that was not, I mean, we had to shift everything. So maybe some of these kids, things could not be happening, but now we have ARPA funds, which would not have been their part of the discussion in the past. So I think it's a, it's a good starting place as far as a full document for us to digest as well as the community and for future commissioners, but it's not too far off from the conversations we have in January each year and what Ron puts as accomplished or by our, by our staff. So it's good to have all of that in place. So once again, it's, it's nice to see it. And I think it's a, it's a more well-developed mission statement and, and a value statement. I think the way it's broken down, I understand having something simplified, but to have it a little bit more, a, a complete thorough thoughtful mission statement takes a lot of work and I think that's what this is. So it's, it's good that it's there.
I wanted to make just one comment. I, I agree, you know, you got to track what's going on here. One easy way to do that, and, and I did that several times, just simply every time we have a meeting, you have an agenda, can you relate the item on the agenda to the strategic plan? And if you can't, then the question is, why isn't it on the agenda? It's really that simple. You know, and, and that's how you, that's how you focus it. Now, I know sometimes, you know, as Commissioner Morris said, there'll be these whack-a-mole things that, you know, are outside of that, but then you just make that clear. That item is not on the strategic plan and here's why it's on the agenda. And that way you can, you can track this thing easily.
If you've noticed the new memo format that Brendan and her team have put together, we have a strategic plan, you know, factor within there. Right now, everyone's putting non-applicable because it hasn't been adopted yet, but once that starts, we'll certainly start tracking that.
Yeah, I would just add to earlier discussion that I really think that when we get to the commission goal setting retreat in January and we have some departmental input, I think that's when most of the real prioritization of those 20 things is going to happen simply because, yeah, one-fourth of 1% of, of the 125 responses that we have tells us that, yeah, a few people that were interested in it talked to their friends and everybody voted or so. But I really think that, yeah, that's, it's going to be a commit, going to become a commission and staff-driven priority list with the, with the commission obviously having the final say on those things. But I, I agree, there's got to be some way to kind of, that like I said on the radio this morning, we have to kind of start filtering things through the strategic plan now to decide, okay, what sort of gets through and gets moved on and what stuff is ancillary and can wait or not important or too expensive compared to other priorities that we have. And so hopefully that can, we can do some things with, like I say, running it through the filter of the strategic plan and making sure it's still lining up with those priorities.
I'll just make the comment on your, on your, one of your slides, it says for the staff technical committee at a crossroads, dot, 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 and we have chosen our path together. And I am already hearing, when I read that, I'm already hearing the kids in the backseat saying, are we there yet? And I think that's going, that's going to be the job of the commissioners and that is, are we there yet? How do we get there? And I'm glad to know that you already track, putting in systems to track those things in our agendas and, and memos, so thank you.
Before we jump to any public comment, I do want to, Jamie and Sarah on here, I want to thank them and Cyril. It's been a great team to work with. They provided a lot of leadership and guidance and helped us through these, these really neat public engagement efforts that, that we did during a pandemic, no less, which was great to see. So Jamie, Sarah, I don't know if you had any other things to add?
I mean, I would add just briefly because I know that the night is getting long on you, but I think on behalf of Sarah and Cyril, like, we're, you know, very grateful to help you with this. These things are never sort of easy. You, you don't have a precedent for doing this and so making the first one has got to be hard because, you know, we're all the same way. We only know what we know and what we've experienced. So really appreciate, you know, your interest in doing this. We think it's just really good stewardship. I loved, you know, the comments about, you know, what we would call and what Jared said earlier, institutionalizing the plan and what you do through staff reports or agenda items. That's the only way these things get implemented is if you've got mechanisms in place to track and, you know, remind yourselves, you know, what you're doing. But anyway, we're really grateful here. We, we wish you the absolute best. A little bit envious when you were describing this parade and these other things happening, you know, coming up here, but maybe next time. But thank you. Sarah, do you?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well. This was a great process, even though we were dealing with a pandemic, we were able to do some interesting outreach and engagement opportunities with the help of the community committee and Jared really spending so much time really, again, you know, helping manage this process and, and pulling together all the bits and pieces here at the end, working really closely with staff as they start to really own this, this plan. And we'll be keeping an eye on you, we'll be checking in. We like to always do that. We wish, like Jamie said, we wish you the best and we'll be, you know, looking forward to your annual, annual reports and the progress that you're making on your plan, so thanks.
Yeah, one, one last thing, just emphasizing what Sarah said and echoing a previous comment. You know, Jared is a rock star. You know, we don't always have the good fortune of having a client partner on the day-to-day work like Jared. In all seriousness, I mean, just been really just delightful to work with here, so we, we thank Jared.
Yep, thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Okay, we didn't have anybody sign up to speak on the speaker's list, but is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on the strategic plan discussion? If so, just come forward and there's the microphone.
John Adams, Senior Long Range Planner with the city. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to consider this plan. This is very important to staff. We're hoping to have the tools that make us better public servants, so thank you again.
Okay, excellent. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close public comments. Any final thoughts from the commission? If not, this was just a discussion item, so there is no vote tonight. And that brings us to the end of the meeting, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. And that brings us to the end of the meeting, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.